Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to our recess meeting of Tuesday, March 20th. It will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Chaplain Aronker, and then we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great, Jeff. Father, as we approach this holy week, I pray God that you might be very mindful of your presence and your grace. We ask now, God, your blessings on this city, on these leaders, on these proceedings. In your son's name, amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here tonight. We will go through the remainder of the agenda. It's going to be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
May I reconnaish, Mayor?
Vice Mayor, yes, you may.
Yes, Mayor, just several amendments here to the agenda. As to the consent agenda, I've got at least six items I want to remove. The first item is be under Mayor's business consideration of joining with other entities in the opioid litigation.
Okay.
If we go to Roman numeral 11, be too for planning. I want to remove items A, B, C, D, and E from the consent.
And be advised, Vice Mayor, that E is being removed entirely, not just from consent, but removed from the agenda.
Okay, well, we'll remove from A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
And I want to add a matter to the agenda for executive session. I want to discuss the specific job performance of an employee in the Community Services Department.
Okay.
This for executive session.
All right. Community development?
Well, we'll call it Community Development.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Community Development Department.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other changes to the agenda? I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn.
On Roman numeral four. The board minutes from March the 2nd and March the 6th.
Okay, from March the 2nd and March the 6th, removed from consent?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Which item was that, Mayor?
Items, March the 2nd minutes and March the 6th minutes, removed from consent. Right? Okay. Any further items? Alderman Sistrung.
Under Parks, which would be Roman numeral 11, I too, the consideration of a facility use agreement with Starkville Saints football, I would like to put that on consent if possible. No one objects?
Okay. Do we have any objection to the consideration of facility use agreement with Starkville Saints football? I'm sorry.
And with a small modification that I think the city attorneys want to do.
Okay, well, let me see if there's any objection after Mr. Lightner speaks. Go ahead.
Board, I just wanted to advise you that the packet version had the expiration of the contract on December 31st of 2018. We rolled that back to have it end on June 30th of 2018 when the insurance ends, and then there'll be a renewal, if it's the board's pleasure, going into the fall. But that version is with me and will be presented at the table, so that's the version you'll be considering tonight.
But it's only a date change, is that correct?
Correct, that's all it is.
Okay, all right. Any objection to that going on the consent agenda?
What was that date change? What was the?
The expiration will change from December 31st of 2018 to June 30th of 2018.
And that's just to align it with Mr. Tate's insurance policies.
Okay, all right. Any objection to that item going on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll add that one to the consent agenda. All right, any further changes to the agenda or the consent agenda? Okay?
Mayor, before we get going, who is representing the Community Development Department tonight?
Mr. Hamlin is representing them tonight.
Where is our executive, the director of that department?
He is in Birmingham, attending a conference.
Well, he will return.
I believe he's coming back tomorrow. Is that correct, Mr.?
Thursday morning.
I'm sorry?
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Okay, anything further? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the official agenda with consented items with modifications as outlined in the discussion.
I'll move, Mayor.
All right, a motion from Alderman Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. Anything further? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. And I will read the consented items at this point. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the February 20th, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. We have consideration of landscape services with SGK Landscapes, Inc. for city mediums and select rights of way for one-year contract. We have consideration of accepting the low quote for Highway 12 Phase 1 landscaping project and authorization for the mayor to execute contract. We have consideration of accepting the 2018 Keep America Beautiful Dr. Pepper Snapple Public Space Recycling Grant for 30 recycling bins, no cost to the city. Consideration of a resolution regarding acceptance, improvement, and maintenance of the Cedar Creek Lane. I'm sorry?
I didn't see how we're gonna do this. We're gonna do this just like we did on Rock Hill with Chip Seale and all over.
Yes, sir. The resolution before you tonight, Chris, please correct if I'm wrong, it gives us the authority to proceed with the surveying and the preparation of the legal documents for those homeowners to sign, and if they do sign, then we would have the legal authority and accepted by the, come back and accept by the board, then we would have the ability to go on and do any kind of maintenance or improvements.
Okay, thank you. All right, continuing reading, consideration of PP 18-01, FP 18-02, request for final plat approval for subdividing plus or minus .6 acre parcel into two lots, 205 Central Avenue in an R3 zone with a parcel number 1181-00-061.00 with conditions. Then consideration of PP 18-02, FP 18-03, request for final plat approval for subdividing plus or minus 1.97 acre parcel into two lots, 311 Gillespie Street in an R2 zone with a parcel number 102A-00-157.00 and 102A-00-156.00 with conditions. Under engineering, we have authorization for City Engineer Edward Kemp to attend the required M.D.L.P.A. and cost estimating training on March the 27th and 28th at a cost not to exceed $250. Consideration of declaring street department pipe and inoperable bulldozer VIN number 96J5400 as surplus and authorization to auction on govdeals.com. Then, under finance administration, request acceptance of February 2018 financial statement. Fire department is request authorization for Chief Charles Yarborough to attend the 81st Fire Chief Conference held in Gulfport, Mississippi, June the 1st through the 3rd, 2018, with advance travel not to exceed $585. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire Callie Thompson as full-time radio operator dispatcher and Teresa Celestine as part-time radio dispatcher, radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Request authorization to hire Verleen Akins as a part-time program assistant in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Request authorization to hire Coretta Reed as a part-time receptionist in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Request authorization to hire Mosier Randolph as a part-time custodian in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Request authorization to hire Charles Tillery as a field maintenance worker in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Request authorization to hire Kelsey Trainer as a part-time receptionist for the Finance and Administration Department. Under Police Department, we have consideration to allow animal control officer Sarah Akins and Victoria Arnold to attend a five-day animal control and investigation. Oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot one. All right, consideration of facility use agreement with Starkville Saints football with the dates amended as mentioned, from December 31st to June 30th, 2018. Consideration to allow animal control officer Sarah Akins and Victoria Arnold to attend a five-day animal control and investigation course which will be held at Birmingham, Alabama, from March 26th through 30th at a total cost of $2,122.85. Consideration to allow Sergeant Kenny Watkins and Detective Jonathan Headley to attend the MDIAI, Mississippi Division of International Association for Identification Conference, which will be held in Gulfport, Mississippi, from March the 26th through 28th at a total cost of $916. Consideration approval to declare an abandoned 2001 Mercury Marquis VIN 2M EFM75WXIX, or 1X, that's a 1X, 609473 as surplus property and auction on govdeals for sale. Then, under utilities, request authorization to advertise for contractor to trim and remove trees along, under, and over Starkville Utilities Electric Division's distribution and transmission lines. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. So, with that, we need to take up the approval of the minutes, the consideration of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying?
Nay.
Okay, I have a four to two. City Clerk, do you have the? Okay, thank you. Four to two, the motion passes. Thank you. Consideration of the minutes for the March 6th, 2018, meeting.
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Walker and a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to. All right, thank you. Mayor's comments. I have some folks to introduce, and I also was hoping we could get the basketball team in here so we could recognize them, but with spring break, et cetera, I think we were unable to get some folks, so I can at least say that we recognize the Starkville High, 6A Girls Basketball State Champions, and we are very proud of them. Alderman Vaughn, you went to the games, did you not?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you share with us a little bit of that, just so that we could hear it personally?
Well, it was a great game. We started off, we went in, at halftime, we went in about two points, two points ahead. And when they come back, they never take the top. Again, we beat them by 19 points.
Outstanding.
It was a great game.
That's super, and I know they appreciated your-
I got a chance to see them all in the whole playoffs.
That's great. That is so nice. So, anyway, we call this the season of the basketball for women, because our women's basketball team at the university is doing wonderfully as well, so thank you so much.
But also, excuse me, but also, we brought Columbus won, Orleans didn't win, so we brought all the eggs back to the train.
Outstanding. Outstanding. That's the way we like it. All right, and I have introductions to make, if everyone will indulge me here. We have hired new employees, and we always like to take the opportunity to welcome, and so we can put names to faces and the public can see as well. So, first off, it'll be in the Utilities Department, we have Mr. Nathan Flippo, who's a water operator of the Drinking Water Division. Here, y'all gonna join us up front here? Mr. Flippo is originally from Florence, Alabama. He's a graduate of Mississippi State University with a degree in environmental geoscience. Nathan was a geologist technician for slot department in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Okay, what's the slot stand for?
SLOT is actually just a short-term reference to Engineering Department at AWBC. It was basically just efficiency management on warehouse level. The two warehouses that were run by AWBC actually took care of second and Charles Stores and Post Million and Cracker Girl Stores all across the nation, actually about two-thirds of the nation. They didn't extend that far out of the two warehouses.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. He was in Tuscaloosa before joining the City of Starkville, and during his free time, Nathan enjoys a variety of activities, including martial arts, candle and soap making, caving, and fostering shelter dogs, as well as spending time with his girlfriend, Tora. Welcome. And then we have Mr. Tristan Green, maintenance worker in the Water Division. Tristan Green is from Yuporah, Mississippi. He is a graduate of Yuporah High School, and he attended Nashville Auto Diesel College. Prior to joining the City of Starkville, Tristan worked for Plymouth Tube Company. During his free time, Nathan enjoys collecting and shooting guns and playing with his two dogs, Snowball and Dolly. Welcome. All right, and we have Mr. John Ricks, who's wastewater operator in the Utilities Wastewater Division. John is from Cedar Bluff, Mississippi. He graduated from West Point High School and attended East Mississippi Community College, where he graduated with an associate's degree in electrical technology. John spent 20 years at Babcock and Wilcox as a welder and fabricator before joining the City of Starkville. During his spare time, John enjoys spending time fishing, hunting, and spending time with his family and watching his son play sports. Congratulations on that, and welcome to Starkville. Thank you all, gentlemen. And then we have four new members of our Police Department. Y'all wanna come forward? We have Michael Banks. Officer Michael Banks has lived in Starkville for the past two years. He served five years in the Marine Corps. Thank you for your service, Mr. Banks. He's proud to serve his community, and the City of Starkville is a fellow officer of the law and is looking forward to his career with the Starkville Police Department. Welcome, Mr. Banks. Rashad Ruff. Officer Rashad Ruff has lived in Tupelo all his life, but is very familiar with the Starkville area. He spent the last three years serving his community as a firefighter. Rashad is now proud to serve the City of Starkville as a police officer with the Starkville Police Department. The chief can't steal him, can he? Is that what he's looking at?
No, I asked you to, but I don't.
Okay. John Pearson. Officer John Pearson has lived in Starkville for the past three years. He earned a degree in liberal arts from East Mississippi Community College and holds a degree in kinesiology from Mississippi State University. John also spent six years in retail management, but is ecstatic about his new endeavor as one of Starkville's finest for the Starkville Police Department. Welcome, John. And last, but certainly not least, David Funseca. Officer Funseca is originally from Los Angeles, California. He has resided in Yuporah, Mississippi since 1996. David says he has long wanted to work for the City of Starkville to serve and protect the citizens of this community to the best of his ability. He's excited to be employed with the Starkville Police Department, and we'd like to welcome you all. Thank you so much for coming here. All right, and that concludes Mayor's comments. Do we have any Board of Aldermen?
I've got two. If you like theatrical theater and drama, Metabody Baptist Church. This weekend, we're presenting an Easter play. This is The Lamb of God. This is something we do every other year. And performance times are Friday night, the 23rd at 7:00, Saturday night, the 24th at 7:00, and then Sunday morning at 10:15 a.m. And then the second thing, I've got to recognize my sister. She is here with Cotton District Arts Festival, that was consented item agenda. She may not want to be on camera, but she has recently transferred here from Oxford, so we're slowly but surely indoctrinating her into the Bulldog from the Rebels, but glad to see her here.
Welcome back, back home, I guess. All right, thank you. Anyone further? Any other Board comments?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment again about the women's basketball team for Starkville High School. That's back-to-back state championships for the girls, and then a lot of those girls this summer, traveling with the outlaw family, won, just a friendly reminder, a lot of those girls won the national championship within their division of AAU, so we can play basketball here in Starkville.
We can, we got some serious basketball talent.
Congratulations to them.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you. All right, next up for us will be citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who wishes to come forward? You have three minutes. If you will come forward, state your name. If you're in the ward, please tell us what ward you're in, and talk to us. Anyway, Mr. Turner? You don't have anything to say to us tonight? Okay, well, my goodness, it's a historical evening, so, all right, if there's no, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close it for citizen comments. We have a public appearance, the Emerson Family Resource Center, and National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Ms. Culberson, Barbara Culberson, would you like to come forward?
On behalf of Emerson Family Resource Center and the Starkville Attipal High School District, we just want to let you know we appreciate you allowing us to come, really every year. We're here tonight to ask for your permission for something, because since 1983, the nation has recognized April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and what we're finding is everybody, every 10 seconds, a child is abused, and that's one child too many. So what we try to do here in Starkville every year in April is bring attention, raise awareness by doing lots of different activities. And one of the things that we want to do, and that we do every year, is we have, we hang blue ribbons downtown, and we post banners in different locations throughout the city. And that's kind of what we're here tonight to ask again for your permission to be able to do that. The blue ribbons represent something. There was a grandmother, Ms. Bonnie Finney, and she was seeing her grandchildren being abused with bruises, and she kind of overlooked it, and she decided, one year, when it was too late, because her grandson ended up tragically dead, that she was going to do something, and she began the Blue Ribbon Campaign, and that's what the Blue Ribbon is really all about. And so we put the posters, the banners, and posted banners to kind of let everyone know that, too. So we just want to ask your permission again this year to be able to do that. I had sent over the different locations to Mr. Sanders, and I do have some folders if you need them.
I've got a list of them here, I believe that did not make it into the packet, but I can read them off real quickly if the board will indulge me in doing that. The courthouse that's on Main Street, the community counseling on Jackson Street, the medical center at 400 Hospital Road, Vowles Marketplace on Highway 12, the Sports Flex on Lynn Lane, the fire department on Academy Road, and then the school locations on Greensboro, Lewisville, Northlong, Yellow Jacket, McKee, Greenfield Street, Dr. MLK West, South Jackson, and then at West Elementary, obviously, we don't have any control over Sturgis Maven, but, and the 16th section, which we also have no control over, but those would be the locations for. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Those are the locations.
So those would be the ones for the board to consider?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much. Anything else you'd like to say?
That's everything.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for your time and for stopping by to talk to us about it. We appreciate your efforts, and particularly in this cause.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that being said, Board, we have under here consideration of approval of the banner placement is read out to you. Does anyone have any? Sir?
Need approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Miller, any second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and I neglected to say, but Alderman Miller is going to be, is out tonight, obviously his place is empty, but he has a family matter that he's attending to, so. All right, under, we have no public hearings, under Mayor's business, first item that is, that was not consented and that is, that needs to be discussed, is consideration of joining other entities with other entities in the opioid litigation, and-
May I reconnaish, Mayor?
Vice Mayor, certainly.
Mayor, I respectfully request for this matter to be removed from the agenda, even though I understand the language clearly in the resolution. I just want to yield the floor to the city attorney so the non-lawyers and others can understand the theory of this litigation, and the attorney can talk about the fee arrangement. He'll, I'm sure, use the term called contingency fee arrangement, so everyone can clearly understand that, you know, if there's no recovery, there'll be no cost to the city. So, Mayor, I'd like to yield the floor to the city attorney, just so he can explain that to the public.
Certainly, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor. We were approached by the law firm of Smith, Bobbingur, and Smith, and the principal in that firm is Jeff Smith, the Columbus legislator, and his son, Quirky Smith, and an attorney in Jackson named Trey Bobbingur, and they asked the city whether it wanted to be a part of this multi-federal district litigation revolving the opioid epidemic. This is nationwide litigation, and claims are now being brought on behalf of counties and cities. And the damages that the cities might be able to recoup are health costs related to the opioid epidemic, lost work time, law enforcement resources being expended, and municipal court resources being expended, among others. The contract that they presented that is before you in the packet, as the Vice Mayor said, is a strict contingency fee contract, meaning that they would get one-third of any recovery that the city might get, and if there is no recovery, they would not get paid anything. There's also language in the contract built in that if the city was able to get a certain amount of recovery, if that recovery is not enough to reimburse their fees and expenses, then they also, the city's not on the hook for paying any fees and expenses, so no money would be expended by the city if the recovery's not enough to support that payback. Another key focus in the contract is that they will bring no medical malpractice claims on behalf of the city. These claims will only be made against manufacturers and distributors and not doctors. And then finally, there's a provision in there that they cannot settle any case without the express approval of the city, so the city will have a chance to weigh in on what, if any, settlement might be coming. As I talked about in the work session, I certainly can't guarantee or estimate whether there'll be any recovery coming, but this is a chance for the city to get in the pool and be available for any damages should the litigation bear fruit.
Questions? Alderman Carver?
Just a couple thoughts. Will you have any billable hours as a city attorney? Secondly, who exactly are they trying to sue? I mean, this is a nationwide epidemic, is this pharmaceutical companies? Is this doctors? Or is this?
It's the, let me answer your first question orally, and that's no, I'm not involved in any way and won't be involved in the litigation, and won't be accepting any type of referral fee or any type of fee arrangement. I understand that the lawsuits will be brought to, against the manufacturers of this opioid medication and the distributors that push this medication to doctors and pharmacies.
And thirdly, probably one of the more realistic reimbursements would be the city police department. How many hours should the police chief, do you envision yourself having to provide any kind of numbers to this law firm?
Let me answer that, chief, and then if you need to chime in. When we consulted with this group, we told them that the city would expend no manpower and no hours digging any data or providing any documentation to support the claims. That would be the law firm's job, so this would allow them to come in and review the city's records and review the city's data to assess damages, but it wouldn't take any of the chief's officers away from their daily activities.
And how in-depth is that review? Is that something from a public records standpoint? Is that getting into arrest records? And we're not turning all our files over to them, are we?
No, but anything would be protected by attorney-client privilege, so they would have the option to look at any and all files that they thought could contribute to the damages in this case.
And you're in favor of it?
I think it's worth a shot, because if the city doesn't engage, it's not going to get anything. There's no guaranteed recovery, so you might as well put your hat in the ring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, may we join with other entities in the opioid litigation?
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item will be the underplanning. It's going to be consideration of the special event request by Starkville Arts Council to hold a 2018 Cotton District Arts Festival and have city participation with in-kind services, and the timing is from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on April 21st, 2018. Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Corbin are here to answer any questions that maybe the board has. I know this event has been going on for a decade or so, I believe, so it's something that we're pretty well used to, so any Board members with any questions? Okay, you guys want to give us a brief overview, please?
The aptmost question, in-kind services for the 2018 Cotton District Arts Festival will be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on April 21st. The event set-up time at time is 5:00 a.m., and takedown is at 7:00 p.m. And I believe this is in the same basic area that you, basic area has been in the past, like they had to shift some stuff around due to the Vista construction project that's currently ongoing across from Bulldog Burger.
Okay, we've got, should have the, yeah, there's the, the application itself, and there should be a map. Alderman Miller, I see your hand.
Mayor, I move approval of the event request.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to make a friendly amendment, if I might.
Do I need a second before we make a friendly amendment? No? Okay, all right, go right ahead, Alderman Sistrung.
For consistency's sake, with what we did with the Pride Parade, I'd like to remove the condition of approval that requires our being listed as a sponsor on media.
Okay, so Alderman Miller, is that acceptable to you for a friendly amendment?
Yeah, we can make that amendment.
Okay, all right, so noted. All right, so with that friendly amendment, you will make that second?
Second.
All right, a second from Alderman Sistrunk. Any further discussion? Any discussion?
So I guess just for precedent's sake, we just stated that the city will more or less have no sponsorship of any parade of any kind.
It's my intention tonight to remove that condition of approval for each of the events, again, for consistency in the way we treated the previous event. I do think that we are not far from a need to go back through and revisit our requirements. And I think if a group wanted to acknowledge the city's in-kind services, it would be appropriate for them to ask to make that recognition, particularly one that is of the size that this one is.
All right, any further discussion? So I have a motion.
Alderman Miller had raised his hand. Did you raise your hand?
Well, I was going to say what Alderman Sistrunk said, so thank you.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, by nay?
Nay.
Okay, all right, so I have a four to two. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of special event request for the... Let's see if I can pronounce this. For... By Tangalas Ringo to hold the sarcoidosis awareness walk and have city participation with in-kind services, and it goes from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on April 21st of 2018.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes, you may.
Mayor, I move approval with an amendment that we do not provide a city sponsorship.
Okay, Alderman Miller has made a motion that we approve this with and not have sponsorship indicated on the paperwork associated with this event. Do we have all the necessary paperwork?
We received the signed identification form this afternoon, but we have one request to change the other condition from a 30-day before the event to move it to April 16 at 5:00 p.m. The insurance, proof of insurance required.
Insurance requirement, okay.
That would be the Monday before the event.
Okay. Okay, but the insurance will still be provided? Okay, all right. So I have a motion from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. All right, further discussion? Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Havlin, Ms. Pavlin, can y'all give a better photos so we can see what his route started and finished at?
Yeah, the route is, I believe, it's starting in the park, is that correct? And then it runs down Lynn Lane with Live Sideline.
Can you... Can you... Yes, sir, we'll do that.
I think the problem was probably the yellow, and that created it so it didn't give a good copy. So, yes, thank you. Alderman Vaughn will do that for sure. Okay, any further discussion?
Mayor, and Mr. Miller, did your motion adopt the condition recommended by Mr. Havlin?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Let's go ahead and adopt that with the motion as well.
Proof of insurance shall be required by April 16 at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, City Clerk, do you have that? Okay, all right, and that was an amendment to that motion. The second stands. Alderman Walker?
Yes.
Okay, without any further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to two, motion carries. All right, consideration of special event request by Starwell Ministerial Association requesting in-kind service for their annual community prayer walk on Friday, March 30th, going from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Do we have... I'm sorry, Alderman Miller.
I move approval with an amendment to that, that the city will not be a sponsor.
Okay, all right, we have that with the addition of the city not being considered a sponsor. Let me get a second. Do I have a second?
I was going to ask if they wanted to include insurance in there.
They've signed the insurance. Do they not have the insurance? Oh, not yet, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, would you like to include insurance as a part of your...
Daniel's got a recommendation.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, I recommend that the applicant shall provide a signed identification form and proof of insurance to the city by 5:00 p.m. of March 27th, which is next week.
Mayor, I'd like to adopt that with the motion.
Okay, all right, we'll consider that as part of that. So we have a motion with the March 27th date. Now, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to two, motion carries. Okay, last but not least, in terms of the special event request, we have the volunteer Starwell requesting in-kind services for the sixth annual touch-of-truck event on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Starwell Sportsplex. And that is also a event that's been going on for a number of years. Do we have any discussion about that one at this... Or any questions of Mr. Havlin at this point?
May I move...
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker for approval.
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make a friendly amendment that we not be listed as a sponsor.
With that...
I guess I have a question on that one, is primarily our vehicles that are there, so it seems like we kind of are the sponsor. So just help me understand why we would not want to have that language on that.
Okay, I see all... Attorney Latimer?
Alderman Walker, I would hang my hat on the word "listed," so we wouldn't be listed on the promotional materials, but certainly our vehicles would say what they say as they are labeled, and that would be, I think, the distinction.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anything further? Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of four to two, motion carries. All right, thank you. And then I need to recuse myself on this particular item. I'm going to pass a gavel over here.
Come on down.
Okay, well, then, that's...
I said about...
All right, well, excuse me, let me get out of the way, please. Thank you.
I'd like for the record to reflect that our Honorable Mayor has recused herself from the next item listed on our agenda for tonight. The item is consideration of FP 18-06 request for final plat approval for subdividing 26.3 acre parcel into 41 lots on Day Lily Drive in the R1 Zone with the parcel number 106C-00-035.03 with conditions. Mr. Havlin, we're going to ye the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. This is a request by BS Development for final plat approval for subdividing 26.37 acres into 41 parcels or 41 lots. The proposed subdivision is named Greenbrier Phase 11A. This is actually an amendment to an existing plat. The amended area is shown in the bottom right of the area. They're basically adding, I believe, the total of, was it eight lots, to the existing plat? We've got the next one. The proposed subdivision is located in R1 Zone, and it has a gross proposed density of 1.5 units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended 16 conditions as part of the recommendation for approval. And if you'd like to read them, or I can...
No, we don't need you to read. We can read those conditions. They probably been read. Board members, any discussion?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir, gentleman from four.
I'd like to move approval with the following condition that would replace condition 10 as on here.
Yes, sir.
The new condition would say the roadway shall not be accepted by the city until at least 85% of all billable lots located in Phase 11A and any future phase have been developed and received certificates of occupancy, with the exception of the lot 317 labeled "Common Space" on the plat. Lot 317 shall not be included in the calculation. Performance agreement shall remain in effect until such time.
The motion by the gentleman from Ward 4 is to accept conditions 1 through 16 from the Planning and Zoning Commission excluding condition number 10 as printed and in certain lieu thereof the condition that he has read. Is there a second to the motion from the gentleman from four?
Second.
The motion has been second from the gentleman from five. Alderman Miller, is there any discussion on this motion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. The motion is approved. Now, Attorney, we get the mayor, and we yield the chair back to our mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you need to get to comfortable there.
A little bit. I'm voluntary.
Okay, I... Vice... There you go, I'm sorry. Let me look at your notes now.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is taking up the Finance Administration approval of the claims.
Same move.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver.
Second.
And a second from Alderman Miller to approve the claims document. Do I have any further discussion? If seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion by vote of four to two. Claims document passes. Next item is, let's see, we have the parks. Consideration of approval on exception to the Parks and Recreation Facility rental event hours. I'm sorry, I have a motion from Alderman Carver to approve.
Second.
And I have a second from Alderman Miller. Any discussion?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Vice Mayor, you may.
Mayor, it is certainly my opinion that the Board may want to, which it seems that a majority wants this, if instead of our considering these amendments at each board meeting, maybe a majority wants to continue restoring the time back to where it was, so we'll be taking up the Board's time to considering requests to extend beyond the hour of 10:00 p.m. This motion normally passes either when the full Board is here on a 5 to 2 or 6 to 1, so this is not the first request, this is the second request, and normally, when the door is open, for these exceptions, the door never closes, in my opinion. That's what I've experienced for almost 25 years, so it just seems like it's going to be continuous. At the last board meeting, it was a wedding party, and now it's a graduation party, and they're all getting extended, so we're probably getting this continuously, so I just thought I'd just mention this, so if it's going to be the continuous mood of this Board to just extend this use of time for these various individuals, groups, or persons, just to go back and restore the policy or extend the hour back, and of course, not that I agree with it, but it just saves some time, because I don't see any thing that's going to come before this Board to, at this time, to bring about a disapproval of any request for this, so I just wanted just to throw that out, just for some policy consideration, since it appears that the majority of this Board is steadily and consistently in approval to whatever comes up here about going beyond 10 o'clock. So if y'all want to extend it back to 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock, 3, 4, do it. So we'll have to listen to all these exceptions here at every board meeting, but of course, it's up to the will of the Board, but I thought I'd mention that, because this is the second time this has come up, you know, so why have a policy, you know, we're going to keep extending the time? So let's decide what we want to do on this thing, instead of just keep each individual request, because it's going to continue to come. Somebody's going to continue to bring a request, and that's what the Board want to do, just set your policy and be through with it. I ye the floor, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Miller, I saw your hand.
Mayor, in your discussion with Gary Logan, it was my understanding and discussion in the work session that this item and the group that's coming for this particular agenda item, this event had been scheduled and planned accordingly before we changed the policy?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. I've got a five to one. All right, I believe that concludes all of our items in the open session. We will now go into closed session to determine the need for executive session. Do I have a motion to go in closed session? I have a motion to go into closed session from Alderman Vaughn.
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. If you could clear the room, please, we're going to go into closed session to determine the need for executive session. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. If you could clear the room, please, we're going to go into closed session to determine the need for executive session. The board has voted to go into executive session to discuss property access, the property acquisition of Park property. And if you will now leave the room, that's what we'll do, we will discuss that in executive session. Thank you.